We are now calling the regular meeting of the Board of Education on February 26th. To order, please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the Constitution under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Dawn and Chris cannot be with us tonight, send their regrets. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Questions and/or comments from interested citizens?
Nobody's.
Nobody's interested.
Nobody's interested.
Interested. Do we have any updates on questions or comments raised from interested citizens?
We didn't have any from the last meeting either.
Right. But we did have a session today at 5:00 on IDEA.
Correct.
Which was a follow-up to a previous public comment. We have an update on the New York State Office of the Comptroller's Audit.
Patrick?
Patrick?
Yes, okay. So this will be brief, and I'll say informal. So we have, as most of you know, we've been undergoing an audit by the State Comptroller's Office. And it's actually the Division of Local Government and School Accountability that conducts audits of local governments. And ironically, our entrance conference was almost one year ago. It was February 28th of 2019, and the audit actually was five to six months. So we went right through the summer. We had pretty much one auditor. She wasn't here every day, but it was quite a drawn-out affair. And just to step back a little bit and talk about, you know, the audit process, according to the comptroller, the audit process is an integral part of the government's systems of checks and balances, providing an objective and independent review of your program's stewardship. Their mission is basically to improve fiscal management of schools and local governments, and they do that by increasing efficiency, effectiveness, managing costs, and improving service delivery. So they also have the authority to do this, based on the New York State Constitution and general municipal law. And part of their responsibility is to oversee the fiscal affairs of local governments, and local audits is a big piece of that. So just to actually sort of touch on the process itself, so there are two types of audits: internal control audits, which is what we went through, and then performance audits, which would be more like analyzing a piece of your operation, like a transportation audit, for instance. They also did, they didn't get fully into this, but they also do budget reviews. That's become a sort of a big thing. They look at your budget, and they've dinged, that's a technical term, dinged, school districts for underspending their budget and having too much fund balance, that sort of thing. So we had a discussion with them about that, and they moved on, which is a good thing. One of the things I've talked about is the process involves sort of a risk assessment. So the risk assessment is a broad look at all the operational pieces of the district. And the good news for our audit is they looked at all the pieces: the payroll, the procurement, the accounting records, all the financial records. And ultimately, I mean, they don't declare this, but ultimately analyzed that and chose not to review that more deeply, because things were in order, more or less. And what they ultimately did was decide to look at the extra classroom activity fund. So this is the fund at the high school and middle school that sort of manages the student clubs and activities. So it's relatively speaking, compared to our $181 million budget, plus our special aid fund and the cafeteria fund, it's a very small piece of, you know, the entire operation, the full operation. So, you know, in terms of the process itself, they do a lot of research and information gathering initially. They ask us for a lot of information, which we went through. I mentioned the entrance conference, which was February 28th. They do a preliminary audit survey, and that's part of the risk assessment, where they decide where are the areas of risk, where are the areas where they're maybe lacking internal controls or checks and balances. And that's where they focus the audit. You know, they would look at that, those types of areas first. And then the fieldwork phase, which I said took five to six months for us. We had an exit conference, feels like not that long ago, and they give us a draft report. Certain board members were part of that. John, I think you were part of that. And they ask us to sort of write a, within 30 days, write a letter. It could be a simple letter that just is a response, and the typical response is, we, you know, we sort of concur with what you're saying. Thank you. Thank you, sir. May I have another? You know, kind of thing where you're just sort of concurring and saying, thank you for pointing that out and helping us. And that's what we did, basically. We agreed that some of their findings were, which were basically inadequate record-keeping, if you will, in the extra classroom fund. And again, that's the fund where it's run by students principally. It's designed to be educational in nature, where the students are learning about finances and keeping accounting records and running meetings and electing officers and things that we weren't up to snuff, if you will, in that area. And we've already instituted additional training for the advisors related to extra classroom. We had someone come in and do like a half-day workshop. We're going to do that annually. We're going to, and we have started the process of having standardized forms and templates for everyone to use, so everyone's using the same documentation, recording the same information. And our final piece would be a corrective action plan, and that's where we basically, we have about 90 days to do that. We'll probably have that done by next month, and we'll submit that to the audit committee, and they'll review that, and then ultimately, if we agree on that, we finalize that. We'll turn that into the state comptroller. And it's basically our plan, our way forward, to correct or mitigate some of the things that we were cited for in the auditor's report. So I've mentioned many of these things we've started already and we're doing already. And, you know, the corrective action plan, it has to be essentially executed, at least started, no later than the end of the subsequent fiscal year. So we could, you know, we'll probably start it officially at the start of the upcoming fiscal year, but we would have almost to the end of that year to fully roll that corrective action plan out.
So Patrick, if I can jump in. Some of the things that we've done already has been, one of the things that we focused on is policy, right?
Right.
I think the Policy Committee has sat down prior, even before this report came out, to work on some of our policies, and as you said, having somebody come in and do a workshop and just getting everybody on the same page.
Right, because that was one of the findings, or, you know, one of the things we discovered is people didn't know exactly.
Right.
What was required. And I've said this before, the state puts out a, they call it a pamphlet, but it's like a 50-page pamphlet about everything you're supposed to do, if you did everything absolutely according to Hoyle. And it's not uncommon to have, you know, some improvement opportunities in this area, extra classroom activity fund. And that's it, really. So more to come next month when we roll out the corrective action plan and have the board and the audit committee approve that.
Any questions on this for Patrick or Elsie? Do I have a motion to approve the revised 2020-2021 student calendar?
Just so that I can speak to that, we added a superintendent conference day, February 8th, 2021. So we get four conference days. We just added our fourth conference day.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or anything?
You should have made it on the 12th to the 22nd.
Yes, we had a longer weekend.
Next time.
You can vote against it.
No. We can, but it wouldn't matter. You need five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 15th, 2020, regular meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the first reading of the policy manual updates, since Chris isn't here.
Stacy.
So going back to what Patrick was just touching upon, we were actually, as policy, already in the works of altering some of our stuff that had to do with booster clubs and extra classroom activities. Then when we had the results of the audit report, we kind of met again to kind of fine-tune a couple of things. So tonight, the first reading for 3260, relationship with booster organizations. One of the biggest parts that we've modified as far as this is Lori Hock and Michael in the business office, Patrick, Tanya, they have been working to separate our booster organizations. So it will keep the district from being liable for what it is that the booster organizations are running on behalf of those athletic programs and such as SUZA. There's some that are non-athletic. So that's one of the biggest differences that you'll see. And going back to what Patrick just said about specific forms, that form is on here as well tonight, where it is a specific booster organization form that will be given out to each booster club, that will be signed off upon, and that way, it kind of gives them reign to do what they're going to do. And we've been working as a district with Lori Hock and everybody to try to make sure that that language is out there. It's a cultural change. It hasn't been run that way, but over time, we're looking to make the change so that we're more in compliance with what was found. The other policy deals with the extra classroom activities, which is 1336, and same thing. The biggest change that we noticed with that is in regards to our students, with, to be certain that we have a student representative who is sitting in with the financials. So for instance, if we have a student council committee, the treasurer of the student council committee will now be working side by side with the advisor to make certain that all of the financial stuff is coming together. And it's a great learning experience for our students also, so they really should be doing that anyway. It's just something that now we're going to be making certain that we're doing. So those are the biggest things.
Also, if I could add, also, wasn't it added that with the booster that there would be some kind of a meeting?
Mm-hmm.
A meeting so that the parents or whoever's creating the booster would have all this new information?
Yes, so Lori and her team will make certain that as a booster organization, when you're coming in and applying for your fundraising activities or whatever it is that you're going to be doing, she's going to be holding those meetings, and there'll be some training on that as well. They'll be signing off on the actual organizational form, which again takes us as a school district out of the equation. So for instance, as a club, you are free to raise monies as you see fit and do with it as you see fit. However, you will have those discussions with your parent group as a whole. So that will be up to those representatives that are elected, assigned. However that committee organizes their booster club is how they will decide what happens with their monies. So it's really going to kind of be parent-based.
Right, and the district has no fiscal oversight.
No, they will not.
On how they expend their dollars. Because sometimes I get the phone calls if they're unhappy with what the booster is doing with their money, and I don't have any say over that. The district does not have any fiscal responsibility as far as what they do with their funds. So that's really important as well. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion about what was just said? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of the policy manual update?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on policy 5520? There being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by Board of Education committees. Chris, oh, you're not here. Do you know when the next policy meeting might be?
March.
Uh, yes. Let me see. March 16th. March 16th. See that?
Eight or 8:30? When was it?
By the way, I-
8:30.
Hmm?
March 16th, 8:30.
Okay. By the way, all, if people are wandering around out there looking for something to do, these meetings actually are open to the public.
Oh, and we're fine, too.
Yes. Yes.
That's 8:30 in the morning.
8:30 in the morning.
8:30 in the morning, so.
We're operating on this.
If you've had your cup of coffee, you can come in to a policy meeting.
Monday morning, 8:30.
Or a facilities meeting. Dawn, visitation, Orange County School Boards?
So the next, Orange County School Board is not until next week. Visitation, nothing substantial. The minutes will be available soon. We visited with North Main last week. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Dawn? Oh, Dawn's not here. Facilities Committee, do you have anything to report, Patrick?
Not really. We haven't met in quite a while. I mean, there's, you know, there's, we're winding certain things down. It's almost the same report as we provided last time. There's a punch list item for the turf HVAC project. And I mentioned the track, finishing the track off is really the big item.
Right.
I mean, the other, the other sort of facilities-related piece is we've been talking about certain general fund, I'm air quoting general fund, not related to the project, improvements in the area. And we're sort of working out what, you know, what those items will cost and what the priorities are, you know, one of which was a connector path between the two fields. We've noticed that that would be beneficial, because you can get from the stadium field up to the upper field, you know, very quickly instead of walking all the way around. And it would also help us with the cross-country course. It would become part of that. So that's one of those items. We're talking about doing some additional fencing around the visitors' bleachers and some other sort of minor things. So that's, you know, that's what we're going to talk about if we, you know, soon we'll probably reconvene facilities. We'll talk about those items and what the priorities are, so.
And I presume that there are a lot of things still in the future that will have to do with the strategic plan.
Absolutely.
Where we still have buildings with 60-year-old pipes and heating systems and-
Yes.
I mean, we have to do something with those. There are a number of things.
With the-
Have to roll out. With the warm weather, is there a chance that the track laying the final top coat's going to be moved up, or?
No. Just because of the timing of the sports seasons and graduation and everything, it's-
So it's just going to be held off?
It's going to be held off, because it would interfere with activities otherwise. Either, you know, one way or the other, it would just, it would bump something, so.
I don't know how long it takes to lay that down, so.
I don't think it takes long, but it has to cure, you know, so that's, takes a little while, too, so.
Thank you. Report by Student Representative of the Board of Education, Maeve Harrington.
So with regards to the anti-vaping campaign, I'd just like to share that I met with the High School Alcohol and Drug Council this week, and we have set a date for our sticker shock to be on March 3rd, where we will be displaying and advertising the dangers of alcohol and anti-vaping throughout, like, various areas of the school, which I'm super excited about and excited to report back on next time. And I would also like to pay tribute, as we wrap up Black History Month, with a short video that I found online that I'd like to share with you guys.
Today's not a computer, good computer day. I think it's because it's raining.
Oh.
Same on the rain.
It's because Barbour was not here.
Can I get an amen?
That was, thank you.
And you put that together yourself? No.
She did.
No, you found it. That's terrific.
Good research.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right.
Very nice.
Thank you. Personnel, Matt?
Good evening. Before I ask for formal approval, I just want to point out one item.
Co. Last call.
Lights, lights.
Last call.
So that's awesome. So, long story short, before I ask for approval for the items listed under Personnel, I just do want to point out that, as I mentioned last meeting, it is retirement season. We have 24 people, 24 employees on our retirement list tonight.
What, you threatened anyone?
I did not threaten anyone.
Oh.
That, just so you know, the people who are on this list have a total of 485 years of service in this district.
Wow.
So in addition to wishing them well and hoping that they are off to do something fantastic, we certainly thank them for their tremendous amounts of, tremendous amount of service. So with that, I would respectfully request approval for the items listed under Personnel.
Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Tears or huzzas? There being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Business and Finance, Patrick, back to you.
Yes, John. I would also ask for the approval of the items under the Business and Financial section, the agenda, which include our standard monthly financial reports for December. We have two donations to North Main Elementary School from York Cause and Pine Tree Elementary from Global Impact. We have four contracts. I'll just, I won't go through all four, but I'll just point out, the first one is with New York State Dormitory Authority, DASNY, and that's related to the $925,000 Facilities Grant we were receiving related to the turf fields that Senator Skufus was instrumental in securing for us. So it's, we have to have an arrangement with DASNY, because they go out and essentially borrow the money, but that's what that agreement is. We agree basically to use the money for the field and the project, which is essentially complete at this point. It's a reimbursement-type grant. We have items for surplus, obsolete items, calculators at the high school, and non-public school textbooks. There's two change orders related to the turf project and Smart Schools Bond Act, miscellaneous smallish items for the turf project, relining some of the fields, making some changes, and additional drops for the Smart Schools Bond Act. We have a resolution for refunding two serial bonds with the district, and I had sent the board an email today about that. It's pretty straightforward. We have 2007, 2011 serial bond, which we're going to refund as part of our issuance for the turf field. We're going to issue new bonds for, in the amount of about $4 million. And when we do that, we can just sort of bundle this refunding onto that, and it's just like refinancing your mortgage. We'll save about $60,000 or $65,000, just because these bonds don't have a lot of time left. The term is about three more years, so just a way to save a little bit of money. The interest rate that, on the bonds themselves, the average rate is about 3.2%. We're probably going to, again, we don't know exactly until we go to the marketplace, but interest rates are down, so that, we think that rate would be about 1.5%. So we'll save a little bit of money. That's what that is about. So that resolution is authorizing us to do that, to do some issue refinancing bonds, refunding bonds. We have two budget transfers, one of which requires just a little bit of explanation. It's a very large transfer with a lot of transactions. It's related to payroll budget codes and ESSA, whereby we have to identify by building what we're spending on a per pupil basis. So in the past, we had sort of budget codes that just everybody rolled up into, and now we have to have budget codes for salaries and things by building, so that's what that is. It's a sort of a massive budget transfer to get that lined up in the current year, so we can have that ready for next year as well. And then finally, there is an award of the Request for Proposal, RFP, to Transportation Advisory Services, which is a transportation consulting firm who will undertake an efficiency study for the district this spring. So that's it.
Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, Patrick?
Could you get a little more details on that list about the transportation?
Sure.
What are they, what's on the agenda?
Well, we put together an RFP where we were essentially looking for ways to improve efficiencies in the Transportation Department. We were looking for the other things, maybe. There's a lot of processes which we wanted to review and consider, some of which will be related to state aid, you know, maybe ways we can get more state aid, that kind of thing, operational efficiencies that we can achieve. We had two respondents. Transportation Advisory Services has a lot of experience in New York State. The other responded, who frankly was lower, that the fee was lower, was from out of state with virtually no experience in New York State. We've done work, literally, Monroe Woodbury has done work with this firm in the past. I think it was, you know, like 14 years ago, that kind of thing, but they're well-known. And basically, it's just a, you know, a third party who's going to come in and objectively evaluate, you know, what's happening and see if there's ways we can make things easier, better, less expensive, more efficient.
We did something like this probably about five years ago with special education. Did we not?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
We did. So something similar.
Something like that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the arrangement of the recommended placements made by the Committee on Preschool Education and Committee on Special Education, items 15-1, 15-2, 3, and 4?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by Board and Central Office, Varghav.
So I attended a Pine Tree Science Fair a couple of weeks before, so Mr. Martin did a great job of organizing that with the PTA, and it was pretty exciting to see the range of the projects, from climate change to the robotics. I also attended the High School Prism Concert. Kudos to the high school team, Mr. Tavarsky and his team. It was phenomenal. It was really, really well done. Thank you.
Eric?
So congratulations to everybody who was appointed, and to all the retirees, it's a lot of years. High School Prism Concert, Middle School, Middle School Coliseum Concert were awesome. Wizard of Oz at Central Valley was absolutely outstanding. I highly encourage everybody to come out and see Guys and Dolls at the Middle School, Alice in Wonderland at North Main, Chicago at the High School in the upcoming weeks. Congratulations to Catherine Nickel, who's among the finalists of the National Merit Scholarship. Shout out to her. Congratulations.
No, no, don't be intimidated by the fact that you're just taking all of the thunder.
I bet you this next one isn't on your list. Ready? Congratulations to our two chess teams.
It was.
No, it was not.
Yes, it was.
That's not true.
Yes, it was.
Congratulations. So is it on there? Then I'll let you, I'll let you steal that.
No, Mel, you go for it. You started.
Our two chess teams, who are semifinalists in the Mid-Hudson Scholastic Chess League. So, yes, you heard me correctly, two chess teams that are semifinalists, which means that there's only four teams remaining, two of which are Monroe Woodbury.
Wow.
Good luck to Odyssey, the mine teams that are competing next week in the regional tournament, and I have a challenge for the Cabinet and the Board.
Yeah.
The challenge is, next week is the Harlem Wizards game.
Oh, no.
We have never won, ever, in the history of Monroe Woodbury.
I'll be the center.
Largely because I- Largely because I think that we need to have greater representation from the Board and the Cabinet on that team.
You're, okay, you're a team, I'll play.
Yeah, you're going to play? All right, there you go. There's one, the superintendent is-
How close is the D-Fib mission?
I can, I can, I can make sure that we have an A.D. on standby for you.
Is it Friday?
Friday, May, March 6th. Next Friday, next Friday night. March 6th. I think tip-off is 7:00.
And you think this is going to shoot the top?
It's going to put us over the hump. The game is close. This is going to put us over the edge. Yeah.
Thank you, Eric, for your delusional report. Patrick?
Yeah, so I was just going to mention the flu and the coronavirus. Tough to follow that, right?
Let's have a little order here.
So, last year, the district invested in portable devices, sort of these dispensing devices. This is one of the devices. It's not a Nerf gun. And we've been using these devices-
To clean.
-to sanitize and clean classrooms, bathrooms, common areas during the high flu season. So, these portable devices, they, they spray like a fine mist, and it's a, a non-bleach disinfecting solution. And it kills neurovirus, MRSA, cold and flu viruses. We spray desks, chairs, doorknobs, bathrooms, common areas. And basically, you know, these areas are cleaned on a nightly basis. We have about eight of these. We have two larger devices, which, one of which is also used on our buses in the Transportation Department to disinfect, not quite as often because we have so many buses and our fleet is so large. But we, we are doing what we can, and we have invested to, you know, kind of tamp down the flu season and keep everybody well.
Fired off.
Pardon?
Fired off. I want to see it.
Peter?
He said okay.
I'm not authorized. I need training. I need PD. That's right. So, but, but we are, you know, we are taking steps, and I know that Peter and I have talked about it, and Andre, about, you know, just the additional cleaning that we're trying to do to just keep everyone healthy in the buildings, so.
So, what is, what does that look like exactly? So, we only have eight of those. So, is there like a schedule that you're going into various classrooms, buildings?
Where each building has? So, we just quarantine because there's more than eight buildings. So, you know, backups to backups. And so, they use them every night.
Every night?
They use them every night. Whenever they have a chance, they use them.
And there's a larger, less portable machine for the high school just because it's so much bigger in addition to the, you know, the more portable.
So, were we contacted by anyone? The schools are supposed to be contacted, I guess, today on Channel 12, is talking about. I love all this stuff that they say out there, that we were contacted. No, 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 I asked. Have we been contacted by any county executives? Because that was the big talk about, and it's night- Six o'clock was going to be the briefing on this, that it's becoming a global pandemic. Well, what we do is we monitor everything, and we go, the county will give us directives as to what we're supposed to do. I, just before I got here, before I came to the, the Board meeting, I looked on, online. There is nothing there other than wash your hands. If you don't feel well, don't come to work. Cover your mouth. It's all the things your mother told you when you were a kid. And just wash, wash, wash your hands. Right now, that's where we're at.
It's airborne. All right. Matt?
I don't know if you heard about the chess clubs?
No, really? Wow.
So, I just want to echo Eric's, it is school play season, so get out and see them. It's also tomorrow, I believe, is the official start to the art show season. I think we begin at Smith Clove tomorrow night.
True.
So, congratulations to our student artists. It's also parp season, so a lot of schools are celebrating the level of reading in various buildings. And congratulations to all of our athletes who are currently in their sectional playoffs. That's all, yeah.
All right.
Yep, congratulations to everyone. Congratulations to the retirees. I just cannot believe that we are going to be looking at budgets in those big books pretty soon, so time is just flying, and I'm truly amazed that we're sitting here and it's already, next meeting will be March, so have a good night.
Stace?
I want to just say congratulations to all the retirees. Congratulations to the Section Nine athletes that have made its estates. And I attended the NISBA Albany Conference with Dawn and Don and John. So, we were up there in Albany to meet with our representatives. So, we had the opportunity to meet with our local representatives and plus attend some conferences regarding some stuff that pertains to boards and how we can bring it back to our school district, so, so that was beneficial. And I did remember one other question that I forgot to bring up during the calendar. There's been a lot of talk as to what we're doing with our extra snow days, if we don't use them.
Okay, we don't have extra snow days.
I know.
Just so that everyone understands, contractually, we, well, statewide, we have to have one hundred and eighty days. Our contract reads that our teachers can work one hundred and eighty-three days. We are at one hundred and eighty-three days, so it's very unlikely that I'm, we're going to have a day off.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Unless it snows.
Unless it snows.
Right.
Come on.
There's rumblings out there for snow day, I know.
There is no snow day.
I know, I'm just saying rumblings.
That's it, thank you.
Anthony?
I attended the high school post-graduation meeting that the Guidance Department put on for eleventh graders, explaining everything that is needed for college applications. It was very enlightening. I also attended the Pine Tree Science Fair. It's amazing how they take everyday items that you see and explode them right in front of your eyes.
I do that.
And then, I also attended the Prism Concert, and that is always a remarkable concert to go to. And tomorrow night is the Smith Clove Art Show. Have a great night.
Dan?
Love the Prism Concert. I need a swivel chair next year. You can't keep up with all the things that are going around throughout the auditorium. It's fantastic. I want to wish luck to the Jazz All-County participants that are going to be heading up to, I believe it's Port Juris this coming weekend. And I attended the Poetry Out Loud, I guess, call them Regional Finals, up at New Paltz. We had two students attend, very talented. Although they did not win, I do want to give a shout-out to Mr. Yarmus, whose daughter did win the regional competition and is heading to, I believe it's the state level down in New York City. Other than that, everybody have a great night.
Dawn?
Yeah, I think everybody said. So, I, congratulations to the retirees, and I'm looking forward to Guys and Dolls this, next week at the middle school.
Suzanne?
Want to congratulate all the retirees and thank them for their service. Want to wish congratulations to all the teams that have won, and good luck to all those who are going to be competing, especially the chess club. I'm looking forward to the art show at Smith Clove, and everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Maeve?
I'd just like to say the same. Congratulations to the retirees.
Donna?
I just wanted to let everyone know that if you're interested in running for the Board of Education, packets for prospective candidates will be available in my office beginning Monday. There are three seats that will be up for renewal or elections. And if you have any questions regarding voting or absentee applications, give me a call. The state is in the process of updating absentee application, and there are some new guidelines. The biggest one is that I cannot accept absentee applications until Monday, April 20th. So, that is a new regulation. So, that's it. Good night.
Elsie?
First, I want to thank everyone for taking the survey. We re-administered the strategic survey this past month. Two years ago, when we first administered it, we had six thousand responses. This time, we had fifty-five hundred, fifty-five hundred responses. So, it's pretty good, and I, I just want to thank everyone, the administrators and, and the staff, for taking time to take the survey. We will be, we have worked with PLC, so they will be looking at the data and getting back to us in a couple of weeks, so I will have an update in about a month. And we're really looking forward to seeing the things that we may have improved and areas where we need to continue to improve. Our boys' basketball team are recipients of the Boys Sportsmanship Award from the Orange County Basketball Officials. Nobody said that. And then, our math team made Mid-Hudson Valley Junior High Math League Champion for the fifth year consecutive. So, it's very good. And then, lastly, I want to, I think it's important for us to take a moment to recognize the passing of Katherine Johnson. So, you may have seen her on the video. She was a NASA mathematician at the age, and she passed away at the age of ninety-one. Katherine was one of the three dozen African-American women who at mid-century served as mathematicians for the Space Agency and its predecessors, the National Advisory Committee for Aeronautics. Katherine calculated the precise trajectories that would let Apollo 11 land on the moon in nineteen sixty-nine after Neil Armstrong's history-making moonwalk. Let it return to Earth. Her work at NASA was told in the two thousand sixteen movie, Hidden Figures. In two thousand fifteen, President Barack Obama awarded her the Presidential Medal of Freedom, proclaiming Katherine G. Johnson refused to be limited by society's expectations of her gender and race while expanding the boundaries of her humanity's reach. Katherine is a wonderful role model for all of our children, an individual who was instrumental in shaping the history of our country, and who achieved this success quietly and with dignity. This is who we should aspire to be. So, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize her. Thank you.
When computers, they were called computers. The, the people who did the calculations by hand. But when computer computers came in, John Glenn, before he went up into orbit, was given all of the information from the electronic computers. And he said, "If Katherine Johnson checks the figures and says that they're all right, then I'll go up into space." So, I thought that was pretty neat, too, about her. Yes, we went up to the NISBA Capitol Conference to meet with our representatives. I, I'm of the inclination in the future, I would certainly go up there again. But I think it's probably, might be more beneficial and less crazy and hectic with all of the constituents wandering around the Capitol buildings in Albany to, to meet with our representatives in their local offices. I think we get, probably, might get a little bit more time and more personal time about what the specific needs of our, of our district might be. And then, on, on Sunday afternoon, NISBA has various talks. And it's the same every, every year. The governor comes out with his budget, which is low. The regions come out with a budget which is high. And then, the end of March, the legislature will pick a, a number somewhere in between, and that's the, that's the way it goes. They should just have a tape loop up there every year. Not to diminish the importance of our involvement in government and being representatives of our district, but sometimes it's, it can be a little repetitive. Congratulations to the new hires and to the bevy of retirees who I have a-
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Because you just brought up something about government. And so, I just wanted to say that on Orange County Government, last week at, um, Orange County hosted a free movie called Think Differently Initiative at the Paramount Theater. And it was about a movie called The Peanut Butter Falcon. So, if you get an opportunity, you can look at it. Two board members from our SEPTA here were the only ones that were there and presented countywide. So, if it's ADA compliant, they'll try to bring it here. So, if you get an opportunity, maybe you can check it out.
Peanut butter?
The Peanut Butter Falcon.
Well, it's great that the SEPTA was representing.
That they represented us.
Yeah.
But they were the only, people, only PTA that showed up countywide.
We, up at NISBA Capitol Conference, there were thirteen people from Orange County, and four were from Monroe Woodbury.
That's good.
Which actually makes me discouraged about the other districts, but that's, shouldn't be my problem. Do we have a motion to adjourn? And to executive session for purposes of discussing contract negotiations?
Motion, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? So carried. Meeting adjourned.